Good.
Roll call please.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. Reed is absent. Mrs. Som, here. Mr. Sharp is absent. Mrs. Young, here.
Okay, we have a form. Mrs. Luciano, did you read us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is just our own.
Okay, there is an agenda with an addendum in front of the board members. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addendum?
Amen.
Mrs. Som makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Young, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Som, yes. Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
At this time, consider a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of accepting minutes from previous meetings, approving certified substitute list number five as submitted by the Fairfield County Educational Service Center. It's attachment two in your packet. Approve the retirement and or resignations of the following: Leah Davis, effective November twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen; Anne Scholl, elementary teacher, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty; and finally, to approve donations, Riker donated four hundred and ten dollars for the A.C. athletic account. Is there a motion?
Amen.
Mrs. Som makes a motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Young, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
At this time, in public participation, our student liaisons. Let you guys go first.
Here soon, we're going to be starting up exams. Those are going to be December nineteenth and December twentieth. Those are just our midterms or our finals for our semester classes. One really important thing, and it's really cool for us students, it's an open campus, so you don't have to come in for all the periods of the day. If you don't have exams those periods, it really lightens the workload for the teachers not having to have all the students there. It really makes it a better exam day for us students. Student council's having a clothing drive right now. Basically, we're just collecting clothes the students want to bring in, and we're just donating it to local clothing places. Windsor sports are underway, as you all know. Wrestling, girls' and boys' basketball. Is there any more? I don't think so. And the pep band will be at the games here soon, so... In addition to the exams coming up, we're going to have the student incentive trip, which is going to be January seventeenth at the Cinemark Movie Theater. The kids that are available or can go on this trip are students that were on honor roll for the first and second nine weeks. And a new thing, students that are on a roll, or students that did not make the honor roll the first nine weeks, but improved their GPA by zero point five points between the first and second nine weeks, just as another incentive for those students that may have a lower GPA to get up and go on these incentive trips.
Okay, and then, here soon, we're trying to get the peer mentorship program kicked off. Last year, we started up a program where we mentored, or high school students mentored elementary students. Because of some changes in the scheduling that we have this year, it wasn't... It wasn't as easy to get around to doing that. And so, rather, we've started to try and change gears and move toward a peer mentorship program, where junior and senior students have the opportunity to mentor students of any grade level from freshman through senior year. Should they need help with something academic, extracurricular, maybe they're a senior student who needs help filling out scholarship applications, whatever it might be. So, we're currently trying to gather people who are interested in that program and try to start getting the things worked out, and then get our mentors trained once again to hopefully start that up at the beginning of the new year in 2020. Just a few other little announcements here. The band and choir concerts are December eleventh. It'll be this Wednesday, six P.M. and seven P.M. respectively. The choir concert will be in the cafeteria. The band concert will be in the gymnasium. Gymnasium one. And then, the band will also be at the Stoutsville Parade on Saturday, marching, which begins at five-thirty. So, if you're interested in coming to the parade in Stoutsville to see the band and support the wonderful Stoutsville community, please do so.
All right. Make sure there are questions? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We have our FFA update.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Julian Scott, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Amanda Creek Creek FFA chapter. Since the last board meeting, our chapter has held the annual hog roast. We have held state FFA leadership night, which is where members come from around the state, as well as the state officers, and facilitate that. We had one night requisite frishes, one monthly meeting, the annual fruit and snack sale. Delivery of that began this week. Tonight was the first night that we started to distribute fruit and snacks. If you have any questions about orders or want to see if we have any extras that are still for sale, please contact Mr. Tilly or Mr. Sharp. We have assisted with the PTO Secret Santa, held the holiday food drive for people in need in our community, and sent members to participate in various contests. Morgan Anderson placed first in the state in only the junior division, but the overall category of job interview. She'll be representing our state in the chapter that the national contest dispel. Our advanced parliamentary procedure contest team placed first in the county and fifth in the district. Our novice parliamentary procedure team placed first in the county and advanced past the district. They will compete in the state contest December the fourteenth. In the next month, we will hold one monthly meeting, one night breakfast, and attend the Columbus Zoo Lights trips for those members who qualified to go on that. Additionally, I was not able to be at the last meeting, but I just want to say thank you to our board members and to Mr. Dick, as well as the administration here at our school for helping us to pass our levy. I was running the student involvement group Instagram, and we started a hashtag about your Aces Y, and the number of responses that we had to that was absolutely moving, and it just made me feel very blessed within this community. As I conclude tonight, I would like to thank our administration, our school board, and our superintendent, Mr. Dick, for allowing our chapter to participate in these various events. We genuinely appreciate all that you do for us and for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julian. I'd just like to say personally, thank you for the work you did. I think the fact that our students were involved in the levy campaign was incredibly impactful. Sight of seeing some of our students line the streets down here as people were driving into the polls and have to look you guys in the face and make a decision for themselves about whether they're going to support you or not was great. So, appreciate all the work that our students were contributing to that effort.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Julian? Thank you. All right. Next item of business then. Is there any others, anybody else wishing to speak? I think this gentleman might want to speak.
Sir, we are in public participation right now.
What is it?
I said we are in the public participation period right now.
Oh, are you?
Would you like to?
Yeah, I just wanted to stop in and, um, that's pretty right, right here?
That's good.
Talk about the gym, the gym time for the kids in basketball. I've been going around picking the brain of a lot of different schools, just trying to see what they're doing different. And one of the things is they just don't have any problem getting gym time. Weekends, Sundays, Saturdays, doesn't matter, they can get it. So, I want to see what we need to do to change some of that. We, uh, right now, we have over a hundred kids in the boys' program. We got a couple of different travel teams, and we're practicing three hours a week. And really, we're just not, we're at a competitive disadvantage. Obviously, with the levy just passing, one of the big things was talking about the sports, the extracurriculars. It's a big part of what we do here at Amanda, and we're just looking to, I mean, we got the volunteers. We're just looking to get these kids in the gym, and, you know, what do we need to do? What do we need to change? I understand there's some policies in place around, like, we need a janitor here and this and that. I completely understand that if we're hosting, but just for a simple practice, I think that's a little extreme. Us as coaches and the players can put some responsibility, our as coaches can put some of that responsibility on the players and ourselves to make sure that these gyms get cleaned. But the bottom line is, in my opinion, there should never be a gym open. They should always be occupied. So, um, I mean, that's really all I got, you know? I'm here to work, and we need to make a change there, for sure. So, tell me what I need to do.
We'll get back to you. We have a policy tonight to be discussed.
Okay.
Are there, could you, for board members who don't know who you are, Ryan, can you just?
Yeah, Ryan Riddle, graduate nineteen ninety-seven. Actually, been around forever, opened and rolled our kids until this year. I actually moved into the district before the levy was passed. Some people would call me crazy, but I believed that it was. That's my belief in the community, and that's why I'm here and here today to talk about, you know, the gym time. I volunteered, this is my third year in a row volunteering, so I've been with these kids through the fifth grade. I'm driving them crazy, I'm sure, but I'm very passionate about volunteering. And one thing about me, once I do it, I'm committed, and that's why I'm here today, because also just, you know, have parents come up to me, and, you know, they're just a little disappointed that we can't get the gym time. And like I said, I mean, you know, you go to the, it's, I hate to be a little negative, but it's sad when I can go to two other schools and get in their gym whenever I want. I can't take my kid, like, my basketball players in there, but these guys will let me in. I can take my kid in there, and we can work. In my opinion, that's something that we need to be doing here.
Are there questions for Mr. Riddle?
Sorry, I just came from practice, so...
Thank you.
All right. Can I stick around for a couple?
You can stick around all you want to tonight.
Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to participate? Thank you very much. Next item of business then will be the treasurer's report.
Okay, in your package, you received the treasurer's financial package, which does include our financial summary, the five-year board report, fund sums, our fin sum, tax report, and our bank reconciliation of all of our cash. So, for the month of November, our general fund revenues were nine hundred and nine thousand sixty-two dollars. Revenue sources did include our state foundation settlement. We had investment earnings, student fees and tuition, and our property tax allocations came in for the manufactured homes pullback. We received our BWC, which is Bureau of Workers Comp, school and safety security grant money from the state in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Due to this grant being a state grant, we had to put it into a four ninety-nine fund, so you're not going to see that in our general fund. That grant was one that Mr. Dick and I submitted for our film, for the doors, window coverings. So, we had, also had C.V. mature in November, and we rolled that original amount over and kept it in a C.V. and just took the interest out. So, you're going to see that later on in your approval for a transfer of that C.V. money over into our permanent improvement account. Because it is a general fund C.V., the money has, the interest has to be received into our general fund. In expenditures for November, our general fund expenditures were one million four hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Our total checks written for November for all funds is two point three million. The check to Huntington National Bank, when you're looking through your checks, was a biggie, and so, I want to explain that to you. The check for Huntington National Bank is to pay our bond payment, so it's basically our mortgage on these buildings. And it did include our principal and the interest. So, we make that twice a year, and this comes from our O.O. two bond retirement fund. So, the property taxes come into the O.O. two, and it goes back out to pay those, that mortgage. So, overall, our November expenditures were higher than our revenues by a little over five hundred thousand dollars due to the way our revenues are received. To date, both of our receipts and in our expenditures are lower this time than they were last year. And our current general fund balance is nine million seven hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. We do have encumbrances of over one point five million, which brings our available fund balance to eight million one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Does anyone have any questions on those reports?
What are the new terms on the C.V.?
For the new C.I.D., I believe it's, we rolled over five hundred thousand, which was the original amount of the C.V., and it's one point seven four or eight four percent, and I will get that exact percentage for you.
And it's for how long?
I will look on my spreadsheet for the mere fact that we look to make sure that whenever it matures, I've got a running cash balance on there, so I'll get the date on that one. Let me write that down. Does anyone else have any questions? One of the other things I wanted to let you guys know is we've been working with Kingston National Bank to get some higher interest rates for our checking and into investments also. They now have an ICS money market, so ICS is insured cash sweep. It kind of reminds you of Star Ohio. So, I gave you guys some information. It's the C.D.R.'s and the ICS. You guys can look through on that one. It is very low risk. It is the fixed rate for it, but it's almost double of what we're getting for our checking interest. So, it's, what's going to happen is, kind of went through on what our average expenditures are for the month. So, we're keeping three million in our checking account. Out of the nine, a little over nine million, six million's going to go into this sweep account for that interest rate of one point three five percent. There are no service fees. I know with Star Ohio, we have some service fees on that. And I also like how liquid it is. I can get the same day availability if we need to pull that back over. And we can sweep back over also if we get additional amounts in our checking that we want to put over for a higher interest rate. We can do that also. So, it was kind of a win-win for us to keep the money local also, so I'm happy with that. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Is it an automatic sweep, or do you have to direct it?
I have to direct it. I'm allowed six a month. I don't see that we're going to be using that at all, but if we get close to it, we can always just give the bank a call. Anyone have any other questions?
Joe, do you have, that doesn't make, do you feel like you have leeway to make that kind of decision? To do the sweeps and things like that? Does that require board action?
It does not. When you guys do the organizational meeting, that is part of all of the allowances for me, because part of my authority is for investments, so we're keeping it in the same bank. It's just that we're putting it into a different account. You will still see it on our bank reconciliation. You're going to see that under there.
And Joe, what's the current interest rate?
It's one point three five on that fixed rate. There are different rates depending on what ICS or C.D.R.'s you put it into, but we picked the fixed rate, and that's the highest rate as of right now.
So, that one three five is on this new sweep?
Yes.
What are we getting on the current?
Uh, point eight.
Almost, close to double, so I'm happy about that. And how much do we have in that?
Uh, our full bank account is a little over nine million in our report. Nine million seven hundred and sixteen thousand one ninety-one at the end of November. So, we pulled six million over into the sweep account. So, that leaves us three point seven over in the checking account, and we'll be able to constantly keep there to be able for operating. Okay?
Any other questions for Frager? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the financial report? Mrs. Young makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Som, second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Superintendent reports and recommendations. Mr. Dick?
Thank you. I would like to recommend we have further certificated contracts for fine language teacher Whitney Hutchinson, retroactive to eleven eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a motion? Mr. Sharp makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This was due to an I.E.P. that we needed to have someone to the student.
Seeing no discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
All right, number two, I'd like to recommend we rescind the contract for John Hansley, eighth-grade boys' basketball coach, due to the lack of paperwork.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Mrs. Som makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sharp, seconds. Discussion?
I will, we will address this later in the next process of hiring, but in order for us to have someone hire, we need the, all the paperwork. We have not been able to receive that yet at this point. So, it's time we hire someone who can get the paperwork turned in.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
All right, the board has offered the position of freshman boys' basketball coach and eighth-grade boys' basketball coach. Those employees of the district could have a license, and no such employee qualified for this position accepted it. Further, the position was advertised as available to any individual with a license who was qualified to fill it and is not employed by the board. Therefore, I would like to recommend freshman boys' basketball, Alex James, and middle school eighth-grade boys' basketball coach, Brian Barker.
Is there a motion? Sharp makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Young, second. Questions or discussion?
Obviously, this hiring of Mr. Barker replaces the contract we just rescinded, so... And then, the basketball was added for freshmen was, we did not sure, we were not sure we were going to have enough for a team, so... That's the reason it had to be retroly, retroly added.
Has Brian been working with the team at all?
He has been. He has, he's had all his work turned in because of the volunteer piece, so when it came time. We got his application this morning, and he's ready to go.
Yeah, that's going to be my question. Is there a switch in?
No.
To somebody they haven't seen, like, taken three games in or something?
He's been with him since the beginning.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
I would like to recommend we approve the class-like contract for bus driver Sarah Saxire, custodian for four-hour position, Mandy Lindsay, and substitute cook cashier Brandy Rogers and Tier Crad.
Is there a motion? Mrs. Som makes a motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Young, second. Discussion?
We had, if you remember, we had someone who left at the last, we accepted the resignation of a bus driver at the last meeting, and then, this custodian is the position that we said we're going to try to get from the eight-hour to four-hour to see how we get along with it, so that is this person, so... And we're always looking for substitutes.
Any questions? Discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to recommend the following volunteers for two thousand nineteen, twenty. Classroom, Tralina Fisher, Ally Martin, Rachel Kirschner, Ashley Spires, Nick Hoffman, Gerald Runfield, and Mike Joy. For wrestling. That's right.
Is there a motion? Mr. Sharp makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
This, I always talk about the volunteers, but this is, we had an addendum. Someone saw that we needed help real quickly, and they jumped in, so I do appreciate all the time and effort these volunteers give to us.
What grades are they?
Those are, the wrestling are high school, all those are high school, the wrestling. Classrooms, those are, I believe, one, two of them are the three are primary, and one's elementary.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
All right, the athletic council meeting we had prior to the meeting, for this meeting, do you want me to do it? Do you want me to give it?
You can do it.
Okay. We had several items on the, on the topic, and one was our booster club. I had approached you back in the spring about their desire to create a multi-purpose building between the baseball and softball field, and we discussed that. At the same time, we discussed the part about, Mr. Dalton had reintroduced a multi-purpose building that was discussed in two thousand ten, eleven, when they have renderings of, so we discussed about potentially looking at how we can best utilize dollars to have multiple places for our kids to utilize. Obviously, Mr. Riddle's question might, you potentially could look at something like that involvement in that building, so... Discuss study tables, how we've kind of gotten away from study tables to become discipline tables, and if... They usually are at the study table because of a GPA issue. So, therefore, if we don't have anyone there working with them in order to improve the GPA, more than likely, the GPA's not going to improve. So, we need to look about why it was created and how we used to do it, because that's how it was always based on, was to make sure these students got the help that they needed. Yes.
Do they not have somebody there to help them when they have study tables, or is it more just like a study hall?
Well, it's more like a study hall. The problem is, is that we're not giving the information to the teachers to be able to help them. That's the most, I mean, they could and would if they knew what each student needed to work on, so... Because I can tell you, if you had ten kids at the study table, and they would say, "Why are you here?", ten of them would say, "I have no idea." So, they know they're there because of a GPA issue, but, and they know deep down why they're there, but they would, they're not going to get that up, and so... Uh, we discussed the track. Mr. Evans is going to talk with the Mid-State League about the potential of trying to switch. We were supposed to host the Mid-State League track meet this year if we can potentially trade with next year's hoster, so that they could host it this year, and we could get our track put in place, and we could host it next year. There's an MSL meeting this Wednesday, and he is going to discuss that with them. We discussed last year the need for a new scoreboard. One of the issues we discussed was obviously about the timing of new scoreboard with the levy, even though it was going to be self-funded, self-raised money, no, hopefully, a little bit of a fundraiser, those type of things. So, that committee that started this time last year will be meeting here very soon. I have an email from Dak Chronicles, who's the company that we've been working with, to discuss trying to, maybe, even getting something started before we go for break next Friday. The seventy-seven gymnasium, I think it's Elivar, is the architectural firm that we use, and I've asked them to create some documents so I could at least get it out to a bid, so we would know what our target is in regards to the total cost to fix that wall, instead of ballparking it, in order for us to ask them the idea of what we need totally.
What's the, just the general description of the work that needs to be, I mean, we're talking just summationary work? We talking?
They're talking about ballots, they're putting in ballots or ballots, I don't know which word is. It's poles that's in the ground, and that's supported against the wall, so the Boeing cannot take anymore, so... And then, obviously, there's the piece about taking the wall out, redoing the footers, and rebuilding from the ground up in between the stairwells, so... That's the reason we need real documents, to get real pricing. Paid participation fees, we obviously will need to discuss, because I would like to have this in place by the April meeting, May at the latest, so that our kids will know what the plan for and what we want to look at. Mr. Young brought a question from Travis Stone, our baseball coach, about a scoreboard or the need of a scoreboard at the baseball field. It is in, it is in dire need. And I think maybe it, I don't think it was new when we built this building. I think it came from Stoutsville. Yeah, I, I, I don't think. Was it, do you know what it's called, Mr. Young?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it's new. Yeah, it's, it's never been. So, we've got an old scoreboard that it's in. If we never use it again, we got our money for it, so... And then, Mr. Dalton came to discuss the amount of assistance we have compared to other schools in the league, so...
What kind of assistance?
Football coaches, assistant football coaches.
Assistant.
Oh, you- Oh, you were thinking A-N-C-E, no, it's assistants.
Yeah, I'm like, what kind of assistant?
Assistants. Well, he would like that too, if you got any of that, so.
I guess what was his point there? Did we have more or less assistants? Does he want more or less?
We have much less compared to pay.
Are you talking about pay?
Pay.
Yeah. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. What, what's the discussion on the pay to participate?
About what that amount's gonna be.
Is there a recommendation?
Um, because I don't think it's gonna be, I don't, I think people think it's gonna go away because of levy being passed and I, as I try to explain things, I've never said that. I don't know if anybody else said that. I, that was never at the discussion of a table, that any of that table I sat at, there would be no participation fees. I think we want to look at reducing them, um, but I still believe or that, I do believe kids or families have ownership in the things that we do, so.
I was just perusing.
No, no, there was never a dollar amount that was discussed, put it that way.
But the discussion was that we would keep pay to participate?
Participate. Yes. Yes.
What is the, what is the status of the athletic building?
Mr. Young indicated that Edward Sol builders are concerned about starting at this time of year and not being able to finish it at the time we start baseball, softball, and which creates trafficking issues and that, so. And, and, and I go back to the multi-purpose building and I'm not trying to be stand offish with any of it, cause no one would want our facilities for outside facilities for our athletic teams to be more than we have, to me. But, Mr. Dalton introduced, um, he brought it back out to Amanda Kirkley Athletic Organization or Association.
A.C. Sports Organization.
A.C. Sports, I don't know what it's called, but it, he, it was started back in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve in that area. They raised some money, they have renderings, and my, my thought process is, we gotta be careful with just putting buildings up and can we create a set, a, a building that serves even bigger, better things than? Cause, um, and we can talk about location, because again, we start talking about putting things behind the building and you got bus traffic you gotta worry about at certain times of the day. So it's, uh, I would like to bring in somebody from like Steham and Paul or S H P, who was the architect on this building, who has people who does this, to sit down with us and discuss potential layouts, potential capital costs that we would have to raise to pull off some of the things we wanna do, how we could do it over a period of time and, um, because I would tell you, this is, I'm gonna be politically correct as I can be. Many times when we have projects, it's about people who can live in the moment and have something for their child. And, and by the time that happens, that child has moved on and then that steam or that, uh, desire to have that goes away and, I've heard, I, I can be, I can tell you, I saw specific drawings for a building in two thousand one and we're still talking about a building in two thousand nineteen, and I'm not, I don't know how, if we're getting closer today than we were in two thousand one. But all I know is I had a donation of a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand one. I don't have that now, so, uh, that's off the table now, so.
How do we expedite that? So, so we're, so we're, instead of talking about it, we create a plan and, and execute it?
We bring somebody to the table who knows what they're doing, because there, I get, there, there's fifteen people in the room right now, I can tell you, fifteen people have an idea. And I can almost assure you they're not the same.
Yeah.
So, in order to do that, until we get, somebody says, "You need this to do that", I think we're throwing darts.
So right now, we're still basically in two thousand and one?
Uh, no, we have, we have plans again.
Okay.
Uh, we have ideas of how it's gonna be funded now.
And how, what are those ideas?
I think I'll, I'll have to, sorry, Mr. Riddle, we do have to keep our public participation within the public participation section, but I think we'd be happy to have.
We can converse.
Maybe your.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Yes.
Appreciate that, thank you. I mean, I think to your point, we have to make sure these capital projects where they're privately funded or, or what, have multiple use, that they're open to, you know, if we're talking about athletic facilities, but they should be open to multiple students and multiple types of activities as much as possible, right? We shouldn't build a football facility over here and a baseball facility over here and neither team's gonna have access to it, you know what I mean? So, um, I think that's a, that's a really thoughtful approach and I support that.
And we will have them to the table before the next thing I believe.
Okay, great.
Uh, any other questions?
The legislative liaison report, Mr. Riddle, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I can fill in. I, we've, there's been a lot of conversation, obviously, and, uh, Cup Patterson has received multiple hearings in the House. It has, I would say, lost a little bit of steam as of late. Speaker of the House recently making comments that he feels like rural school districts need to be better accounted for than maybe what Cup Patterson does. But he's also thrown out an idea that I think is, you know, can be somewhat controversial if you start to go talk to some people who live in suburban areas as well by having a statewide property tax that all goes into the same fund and then redistributed throughout the state, so. It will be interesting to see how this, this, but you know, I think there, the legislature's actually having a real substantive policy debate right now about education funding and I think that's pretty refreshing, um, but these things are gonna take time. This is not gonna be something that's gonna move very quickly. I know the state board's been spending a lot of time on, uh, report cards as well and, you know, the legislature's been challenging the Board of Education to come forward with, you know, new recommendations for what state report cards should look like and I think they're having the same debate as what we are with our, with our type of, you know, A, A through F grading versus some sort of more substantive grading that gets more feedback and so. State board's been trying to tackle that. I think those are probably the two highlights for, for us in terms of what we'd be interested in.
Any questions for Mr. Kern? Alright, building principal reports, Amy?
Sure. Um, so for the middle school, I just wanna start off by reiterating something that, um, Kyle or Erin had said earlier. So the band and choir concert is this Wednesday, uh, with a choir concert at six and the band at seven. Um, at the middle school, we recently completed a canned food drive where the middle school, um, contributed three hundred and fifty-three cans to local food pantry. Student council adopted a family and over the weekend they shopped at Target and those gifts were distributed for Christmas. And the student council is also looking to donate, um, a significant donation to the kindness closet here at school, which would go to families in need. Wrestling update, our middle school wrestling team of ten or eleven, um, participants placed third overall this weekend, which was phenomenal for those kids. There were a lot of champion finishes. Uh, I learned a little bit more about wrestling as I attended. Um, Aces Cafe is, uh, scheduled for December twentieth at eight to eight forty-five in the morning for seventh and eighth grade students and nine to nine twenty-five for sixth grade students. We currently have two Fridays remaining in our dodgeball tournament, which, um, to go back, we have been running this dodgeball tournament for the last five, well, it will be a total of five weeks, um, for students who have demonstrated positive behavior and also good grades. Um, the students are really getting into it with team shirts and all kinds of fun ideas. Last, uh, but not least, we also recently completed Chelsea's Christmas donations. I don't have the total amount in dollar figures, but the top three classes raised, um, five hundred and fifty-eight pounds and three ounces of points. So I don't know, I don't know, um, how much that is, but that was the total weight.
Alright, at the primary, right now we have a canned food drive going on. We're trying to curtail Mrs. Kraft inside her desk with some canned foods. Uh, we are finalizing our end of quarter assessments. Um, and for the K five, we are gonna be having some holiday spirit next week, uh, with Monday, they're gonna wear their Christmas socks. Tuesday, we're gonna wear Christmas shirts. Uh, Wednesday, we're gonna dress like a candy cane. Thursday is pajama and movie day, and then Friday, the, the kids can wear Christmas hats, bows, headbands. Um, we also have our Christmas parties next Friday at two thirty, um, and then we also have a local church that is coming in and providing breakfast for the staff next Friday. Um, so I know a lot of, um, the churches here in Amanda, they, um, all kind of help out. So I think ACC is the one that's doing the primaries.
What's written?
New partnership, we, we have a couple of trips coming up through the, our new partnership with the Fairfield Thirty-three Corridor. Um, Wednesday, some of our students get to go to T P mechanics and take a tour. Um, we're very blessed to have, uh, Carrie Stone out here working with our students from Thirty-three Corridor, and then in January, um, we have some students going to tour, uh, Centos and Lancaster. So, um, if you ever wanna know any more information, Fairfield Thirty-three, so Fairfield Three Three dot com is, um, that and they talk about the student career readiness packet and things. Some of our students are involved just for the career readiness, some with the alternate pathway to graduation, so we're kinda using it for multiple purposes here, so. Uh, kind of a cool organization. There's some A.C. alumni on the board for the Fairfield Thirty-three Corridor as well. So it's, it's a, it's a good organization that we've become a part of, very successful so far.
They've created a seal.
Yes, yes.
That is, can be put on the diploma, uh, that talks about what the Thirty-three Corridor Alliance needed for their people to be, so they can take it to area businesses and say, "I've been through this and I've done that", so. Mrs. Wilson?
Okay. We also participated in the food pantry drive and we, our students were able to donate three hundred and sixty-four canned food, so that was really cool. Um, we had our Aces Way Family Movie Night in November. That turnout was more than what we thought it would be. We showed The Grinch and we invited one of our students to actually play The Grinch, um, in our school theater last year to be our Grinch for the family movie night. We got wonderful feedback from the community. They all really enjoyed it and loved it. We were packed in the K two cafeteria. We had two hundred and twenty-five people RSVP and we had forty-five pizzas, large pizzas from Tommy Wayne's that we were able to collect the money from the families upfront. And then once they got there, they were able to come and get their, their pizza. Our third grade ELA scores came out today, so after quickly glancing at them, the only statistic or data point that I can give you is forty percent of our third graders have met or passed the third grade reading guarantee on their first try. Forty percent. Um, that statistic is up from last year. Last year, we were just below thirty percent at this point. So that was, uh, that was a good thing to see. That was positive, very positive.
I thought that number sounded higher. That's, that's a good start.
Yeah.
Where we need to be.
I was, I was very proud of them. We, I will, I know that the other two administrators and I would like to thank you for approving our beginning administrators academy sessions. We started them in September and we finished them this week, so we will be out of the building on Wednesday and Thursday. So, Mr. Mitt, well, we run K twelve ship. No pressure.
Thank you very much.
Easy, aren't you?
New Beth?
Any questions for our leadership team? Thank you all. Alright, new business. First item, new business. Item number one, approved date and time. The organizational meeting for two thousand twenty to be Thursday, January second, two thousand twenty, in room one, or eleven hundred, excuse me, starting at seven P.M. Is there a motion? Mrs. Young makes the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Sharp seconds. Same discussion? Date worked for everybody that's present. Alright, see non-roll call please.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Item number two, appoint president pro temp to preside over the organizational meeting. Is there a motion? Do we need to pick someone? Mr. Sharp makes a motion that we're gonna select president pro temp. So we'll discuss, yeah, we'll, we'll make this a motion to discuss. Motion to discuss appointing the pro temp for the organizational meeting. Mrs. Young, you go to second that motion?
Yes.
Alright. Motion in the second to discuss who's gonna preside as president pro temp for the organizational meeting in January. Uh, roll call please.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, you know, for discussion on this, we have, over the last couple of years, had a tradition on this board that we have a rotating, uh, president position, which largely is followed a pattern of whoever the vice president moves into the, the president's role and we're, you know, kinda doing a one-year rotation. My name is Mr. Sharp, but I'll let you chime in and, and share any of your perspective, but generally we would appoint, um, who, who would be the current vice president as a pro temp to preside over that organizational meeting, so. Just lead it off that one.
Um, yeah, that is how we've done it in the past, and that means it would mean you.
Yeah.
Mr. Sharp?
I just said, I, we discussed it briefly earlier, I'm, I'm, obviously, I mean, I'm fine with that idea. My only con- my only concern in terms of even the idea of the vice president moving to president next year is kind of the same concern as to why I walked in late tonight with my dairy situation. Like every other dairy farm, I've been in not very good straits for three years now and so I can't really hire anybody to help, so I have to do everything and then try to get here on time and that's my only concern is, with moving into the president's role last year as vice president, I, I would, I love, I would love to have the opportunity eventually, I'm not so sure until maybe the following year that it might not be the best idea for me, um, based on where that's at until I get to the point where I can actually hire somebody to help me on occasion and come to school. We have school boards, uh, school board meetings, so I guess that's the only thing I, just to be totally honest, that's the only concern I mentioned. I, I would just, I, yeah, Brandon's done fine. I don't know if you're gonna want to do another, you're not, no, he's shaking his head, so. Yeah, so, at any rate, um, that's my only concern from my own standpoint. But, uh, you know, if I get into that position, then, you know, the president can understand I will need to make financial considerations to make sure I get somebody hired to work on my, um, running the board meetings, so. Use my big school board salary to help you, which is on a monthly basis, less than what I would hire somebody to work for me, so. Losing more money than I currently am as being, as being a school board member, so, but at any rate.
Well, let me say, given we might have a, a change in this rotation in general, I'm happy to preside as a pro temp over the organizational meeting until board members kinda have an idea of what they'd like to do. If we wanna go that way, just in terms of having the current president be the, the individual that would preside at least over getting that meeting started, but I certainly do not have a preference to stay on as president. I, I like the idea of sharing the role within board members and having this rotation. Um, I like the idea of continuing that, um, so that's just kinda how I feel about it, but i- if we need more time as a board to decide who wants to, you know, someone wants to step forward and volunteer to be president next year, then I'm happy to preside as pro temp. It takes very little in that first meeting to preside over the pro temp, if you wanna do it that way, so let's put that out there.
What's the world board time? We gotta put someone in here. Right. I mean, we don't have to do, pick a president to, to the organizational meeting. Correct. This is just, just person who would provide over that very first organizational meeting.
I agree with your proposal, let you do it, the pro temp.
Go ahead and make a motion.
So, I move that Brandon be the presiding over the pro temp meeting.
Correct.
That's our point. The organizational meeting.
Pro temp. Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? A second. Mr. Sharp seconds. Any discussion on the motion in the second? Alright, we need to figure this out though before January. Yeah, yeah. Alright. See no further discussion. Roll call please.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Alright, item number-
All right. Item number three, establish date and time for budget hearing. This meeting is usually scheduled thirty minutes prior to the regular meeting in January. As past practice. If you want to keep it that way, I would recommend we just amend, just make the motion so that it is held thirty minutes prior to our regular January board meeting. Is there a motion? Ms. Sharp, can you ever make the motion that it be thirty minutes prior to?
January meeting.
The January regular meeting.
Yes.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second for that? Mrs. Psalm seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Okay. Item number four, approve F M L A leave requests for grade Queen. Eleven fifteen, twenty nineteen for twelve weeks. And Elizabeth Thager, starting one thirteen, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Mrs. Psalm makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sharp seconds. Any discussion?
I'm not familiar with Mr. Queen. Is he a teacher or just? Okay.
Any further questions, discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Kern?
Yes. Item number five, excuse me.
Item number five, approve the continued participation in the South Central Ohio Insurance Consortium for a period of three years, um, which would, the period would be July one of two thousand and twenty through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. I know this on your agenda, that's incorrectly labeled, but we make the motion here from July one, two thousand and twenty through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Sharp makes the motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Psalm seconds, uh, to approve the continued participation in the insurance consortium through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a discussion of questions?
What kind of insurance is it?
It's our health insurance, our dental insurance, and our vision insurance is through South Central. Um, it is a consortium made up of multiple school districts, not only in Fairfield County, but surrounding counties. Um, and so this helps us with um, leverage on our premiums. So in case we have a really bad year, we don't have to absorb that entire really bad year on Queens.
No, I was just going to ask what Sue asked. It's for the insurance company so that we make a bigger buying group.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And this does not mean we are gone. The South Central, it holds a place for us.
It holds a place in there.
Right, yeah. Our bylaws state that we have to let them know prior to um, December thirty first.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Item number six, approve out of state field trip for the FFA. See the details there? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Mrs. Psalm makes a motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Young seconds. Discussion?
This is an annual trip they have taken for several years. In this one day school.
Mrs. Psalm?
When they go on field trips, I thought with the school, that's not counted as an absence, is it? It's just part of a, it's like a regular field trip that they were here that day and went, is that right?
That's correct. They um, definitely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes. Item number seven, approve changes to following policies as discussed in the board meeting. J H, policy J H C E Wellness. Policy E E A, Student Transportation Services. Policy G B K, tobacco use on district property by staff members with version two, or we had two versions, it'd be version two. And policy I G B E, Remedial Destruction. Is there a motion to approve these policies? This is the third reading of each.
Mrs. Psalm makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sharp seconds. Any discussion on any of these? We've talked about these the last couple of months. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes. Item number eight, approve transfer from fund zero zero one, general fund to zero zero three, permanent improvement fund in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents earmarked for the track project. This uh, this is an editorial note, is interest earned from our, our CDs, CD that insured. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Psalm makes the motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Young seconds. Any discussion? Mrs. Psalm.
So this is money earmarked for the track. Is there any other monies already in there?
Yes.
And how much does that make that total now?
Um, I will have to look at the total. Um, but we've, several times we've made the transfer from CD interest over into the permanent improvement earmark. So each time that, that the board does that, I add it to our project, my project spreadsheet. So I will uh, get that amount to you. With this, I'm thinking it gets us close to fifty, but I will check just to make sure.
And we're thinking it takes sixty-five to do the track.
We're thinking it takes one hundred and sixty-five.
One sixty-five. Okay.
And we're at fifty?
I think we're getting close. We're close to that. The sixteen thousand gets us up there.
And that's just the aggregation of interest.
Just CD interest.
Doing it at one hundred and sixty-five.
Now remember, we're also doing transfers in our five-year forecast for component replacements and things like that. So that can go towards facilities and maintenance for that too, over to the permanent improvement. So I will get you guys the total interest that we've transferred over from CD interest.
Total earmarked. I assume we've done it the same way every time?
Yes.
And how long have we been doing that?
We've been doing it for a couple of years now.
I was just wondering like, how quickly is accumulating? So we've got only fifty thousand in like, two years?
Yeah. What I'll do is I'll take a snapshot from my spreadsheet and just send it to you guys.
Soon as we're getting it this year, by the end of the year.
It's billing.
Oh, absolutely. Awesome.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item or question? Roll call.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Item number nine, approve companion life insurance renewal contract with no rate increase effective February first, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion? Sharp makes a motion. Is there a second?
Psalm.
Ms. Young seconds. Any discussion?
Okay. Companion Life is our life insurance that we offer to our staff members. Um, and it is very competitive rate. It's actually under what South Central Consortium can do for us. So we um, have gone with them. It's barely under what South Central can do for us, but we've always had our life insurance through companions. So as long as they are right there or right underneath, we'll go ahead and keep with them.
Does staff contribute?
They do not. Um, it is board fully paid. Um, and by the time it's all set and done for the entire year, I believe it's thirteen dollars at the end of the year that the board contributes for that.
Per employee? That's awesome. Is this something we do for all staff or is that?
All staff. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar life insurance policy for each staff member.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
All right. Discussion items, start with the first reading of several policies here. Including J F C G, Tobacco Use by Students. There's two versions of that for the board's consideration. J uh, J G D, Student Suspension, J G E, Student Expulsion. K G C, Smoking on District Property, two versions of that policy as well. Um, and for your comparison, the current K G C policy is also included as attachment number nine in your packet. Any discussion on these? Mr. Dick, you want to?
Um, I would like to make notice of the version one, version two of tobacco use for students. Currently, we have, we are using version one. It was last adopted in September of two thousand and fourteen. Um, you can see the new additions they have. It, it mostly revolves around vaping, electronic cigarettes that were not that prominent in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, so OSBA has uh, sent us the new permissive language. And that, and another reason it, it says that is because with, with version one is used, is that it talks to a tobacco-free campus, which is what we currently try to practice, uh, which is our current policy. So that is the reason that I think if I had to make a recommendation, recommendation tonight, it'd be version one. For some reason, it's our current policy with the additions from OSBA. This is, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Then what's version two if it's not OSBA?
It is. It's, it's, it's both OSBA, but it's the policy that we currently use. They, they've added a different version. OSBA has made a different version for two.
And why do you like version one over version two?
Because it talks to be a tobacco-free campus. And I don't know that the ver, well, um, let me see here.
It does. Tobacco use is prohibited on school grounds, athletic facilities, or parking lots.
The only reason that, that version one is that, that if you look at that, the acceptance date is the one we use now. And I, I mean, I can live with either one of them, but we gotta select one and use one. And make sure we're enforcing the one we have, which we, we do now. We enforce, we try to enforce the ones. I'll admit, I don't go chasing people down to check their breath, but I, if I see it, I ask them to put it out or put it away or stop. So. Uh, student suspension expulsions, they want us to eliminate all student suspensions and expulsions in grades K through three. It's not something that we have done a lot of. We have done it, but uh, I think Mrs. Marshall, Mrs. Wilson have tried exceedingly hard this first semester to eliminate them altogether. So.
What's the difference between type one and type two?
Where are we at here?
Page three or four and student suspension.
Page three or four?
Oh, I didn't type one in. Same tire than type two, when type two talked about immediate health and safety.
Type threes were, we were, not that we, we, type three has been, I think, was an accumulation of different things that led up to a suspension, where some of those accumulations don't necessarily, to suspend a third grade story, kindergarten through third grade student is a, it's a huge factor in your academics. And so you, you don't, you want to cut, eliminate things from having free bus cards and you're suspended from school. That's, that's the, as how I've read it and understood it, is the type three activities. So. Now you're gonna have to look at the difference between K G C and J F C G are, and I uh, I think I had Cheryl ready to strangle me, and I'm not sure I totally understand the difference because they are both talking about tobacco use each.
Which ones are you talking about now?
The.
One's strictly for students though, and one's for. The other for.
But see, we approved the, for staff.
See, for staff, we approved version two.
At the last board meeting.
But is this just members of the public?
Well.
When they come on school property?
The guy that speaks to students in the K G C. That, that's the, I've read it multiple times. I will try to make contact with our people from OSBA, so they can explain it to me better than I can understand. So. At least you have it in front of you. So if you have any questions, between now and then, I can at least call and ask. And then K G C, item nine, is the, attachment nine is, is one we currently have. And I, like I said, there's not a lot of difference and from our current term that, or what's suggested. I think it is the e-cigarette piece. I'm sorry.
So we have the policy we just did for the staff. We have two to decide for the students and two to decide for property?
For property. And I think that's the, it talks about vehicles and those type of things, all buildings. And I've been, I have read and reread. So.
Yeah, I think the two, the K G C options are geared more toward public coming onto the thing. Cause it mentions that, you know, we want a healthy environment for our staff students, et cetera. But when you look down at what it's talking about, it says no volunteer, school disenter,禁止smoke, et cetera. And then the other one mentions that if there, anybody gets caught, citizens failing to comply with this policy or education. So I would think it's geared more toward adult people coming onto the district grounds, basically.
That was, that was kind of my, I didn't read it verbatim, obviously. I couldn't scan them, but that was my takeaway, was that this one was for members of the public. What's the big difference from the other two policies, the one we approved and one we're considering?
Is there one of these two versions that we currently use?
Yeah, well, the last one, attachment nine is the one we currently use.
Okay, gotcha. So there's three of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
So has OSBA given us two versions of these things or not?
That we, yes, they are giving us.
And are they giving you some sort of a synopsis to break down the difference between the two?
If you look at the very end of the policy, uh, when they give you the tile-sized print, that is there. I guess for lack of a better word, the, the choice to choose from, the change in the language, the notes.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I see.
All right. Any further questions about these policies? Obviously, these have had two more readings, so if you want to spend some time with them, bring your questions back. They'll be up for second reading to our first meeting next year. Okay. Not seen any further questions on those policies. Move on to our second reading of policies I K E, Promotion or Retention of Students, J E D A, Truancy, and E E A A, Eligible Zones for Pupil Transportation. Other questions?
I don't have any comments on those policies.
Do you have any comments on those policies?
Any questions or comments on that? If not, they'll be up for third readings and votes at our January regular meeting. Okay, seeing none, let's move on. Uh, other discussion items include just passed around, uh, spending some time on this cash balance policy. Passed around latest draft, what I've kinda reworked, really tried to simplify this and structure this policy more as a target, as a goal for us from an operational standpoint. And instead of, you know, some of that language that has mandatory actions built in there to be a little bit more of, okay, the treasurer needs to flag this for us when we get outside of this operational range, still the same operational range of between forty-five percent and fifteen percent of the prior year's operating expenditures. And, you know, just a requirement that the treasurer flag this for us. And then I know, um, I think the leadership team here has a recommendation that we would probably modify this just to say that both the treasurer and superintendent would bring forward proposed options for the board to consider in reaction to it. I think right now it would just says treasurer, but I think we would wanna include, that was just based on some model language that I found. But I think we'd wanna have both our treasurer and superintendent make those recommendations to the board. Any questions, comments?
On the prior year's operating expenses? Is that six thirty expenditures that that was?
Yeah, I think so, I think it's it's the last.
The year in.
Year you have official actuals for, right?
So when we get to July first, we're still looking at June thirtieth and saying, well, what's our cash balance?
And so I know we talked about the concept of having kind of a three-year window, look at this. I think it's a good idea, since there are no mandatory actions in this policy, though, that we probably, this would probably be flagged more frequently, potentially. But at least we're, from a board, from an operational management standpoint, we're staying on top of it pretty closely. And even if we look at it and say, you know, we don't think there is any action that needs to be taken at this time, at least it's been flagged for the board specifically under this policy. And we're we're giving it its due consideration.
I think we, I like the concept, but I think there's some wording that could make it easier to read.
Sure.
Um, cause usually I would think, it's saying the district shall maintain a general fund cash balance reserve in a range equivalent to, I would prefer forty-five to fifteen percent. I would rather it be fifteen to forty-five percent, so you're looking at lowest to highest. I'm not sure I like that wording, range equivalent to, I don't know, between fifteen and forty-five percent. Word range makes me think, if it's outside that range, it's okay, and I don't think that's the intent of the policy. I think the intent of the policy is that you notify the board if it is outside that range.
Correct.
Am I right? Um, maintain a general fund cash balance between fifteen percent and forty-five percent. Cause in that saying, it's non-negotiable what you should report. If it's fifteen to forty-five, you need to report it.
Sure, yeah.
This is just kind of, I don't know, maybe that's just my take on it, but I don't know who's gonna read it in five years from now. Will that be their take?
No, I think, yeah, I think it's a good recommendation.
I would like to see some examples. Take, what do you, September thirtieth, and compare it to fiscal year end of nineteen, like, nineteen, yeah, nineteen. Just so that we we can understand, based on the financials, okay, this is the dollar amount that, these are the two numbers that are gonna be representing that ratio.
Well, I mean, this would have been, under this policy, it would have been flagged for the board for the last six years?
Yeah.
Cause we were at ninety, like, we were up in the ninety percent range, and we still haven't come down below forty-five percent. So under this policy, the treasurer would have been required to flag for us the fact that we were we were operating outside of the forty-five percent window.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it's part of this or anything, just for my own personal, so that I can look at it and say, this is where I'm, I would be looking at it going forward, at the end of January, or whenever. When this first came out, I ran numbers based on our five-year forecast. So you guys know how I give you that simplified five-year forecast number, um, when you're looking at like different levy numbers and how it's going to affect our bottom line? So I kinda pulled that and ran some numbers, so I can share that with you guys if you'd like. Um, I'll change the percentages of what I had on there, um, because we had originally had talked about seventy-five percent would be that, that top where we would have to do something with that money. So I've got that percentage in there, but I can pull it back down to fifteen and forty-five, so you guys can see with those actuals at the end of each fiscal year, maybe the past three or four years, and then what it looks like the five years in front of us. Because we're talking about doing this on a monthly basis, correct? Or potentially, or is it only at year end? My suggestion is year end. Okay. So it would be an annual? I was confused, cause I thought originally we had said, okay, every month this thing could go up or down.
Yeah.
On the second paragraph, upon receiving any indication that such cash balance reserve may not be achieved at any point, can we make that more, cash balance may not fall between this range? Achieved makes it sound like achieve the lower end. We've achieved fifty percent, so does that mean you need to let us know? Do you understand what I'm saying, like, it's outside that range where she should notify us? But the word achieved makes you think.
Maintain.
Thank you, that's a good word.
And then I guess to her, to Ms. Jones' question, then if we, should we include there, like, in that part, from receiving any indication that such cash balance reserve may not be maintained, do we say that at the end of the fiscal year? If we wanna just look at it at the end of the fiscal year, or, cause the way that says at any point, then it kinda comes back to a use of questions. Is it at any point during the year, if we, if it looks like it's gonna do that, do we need to get flagged, or do we just look at it at the end?
I actually am more in favor of that any point.
At any point?
In the, personally, I mean, in the fiscal year. And you're still comparing it to your actual from the prior fiscal year, but anytime during that year this happens, the treasurer should flag it for the board, I, in my opinion. So I I like to pin it like that, I don't, I don't.
I think right now forty-five percent would be kind of where we're at right now, probably roughly eight, between eighty-nine million range, somewhere around.
We're at nine point seven, we're at nine point seven right now.
Nine point seven million.
Nine point seven million, cash general fund.
But we're.
Yeah, without conferences, while I was like.
Right, without conferences, right.
But if you look at, you know, what our last year's expenses were forty-five percent, that would be somewhere in the eight or nine, yeah, so we're kinda right there right now. Which is not a bad.
And I can do that during my monthly, since we're already given the cash balances, and we're doing the five-year board report, we can look back at month over month.
So what was our, I don't have it in front of me, I don't, I don't, no, our expenditures for last year? Cause it was somewhere on seventeen million.
So at this point in time last year, our expenditures to date of eighteen was seven million, eight fifty-seven, six ninety-three. Our fund balance was eleven million, nine sixty-three, one twenty-nine.
Our expenditures were what?
The expenditures to date, seven million, eight fifty-seven, six ninety-three, the fund balance.
I was looking for the total, total expenditures for. Okay, that's, I didn't know if you had that, cause I was trying to figure.
It's gotta be more than seven million.
It's gotta be closer to seventeen million, that's the reason I, forty-five percent of that, the reason I'm asking is, uh, forty, seventeen million is about seventy-five, so.
But we're looking month over month, so are you wanting to look monthly back to the prior year's end of year? Or monthly back to the prior years at that month? Do you see what I'm saying? The year end for twenty nineteen, total expenditures was eighteen million, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, four hundred and seventy-two. Do you see what I'm saying?
The the, the basis for the evaluation is the prior year's actual expenditures. And then what you're comparing it to is what your cash balance line says at every point through.
At any month, okay.
The following fiscal year.
Okay.
At any time, all right? If it goes above forty-five percent, you're gonna flag it for the board.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Under this, under this policy, that's what we would do. Or vice versa, if we ever fall below the fifteen.
On the cash reserve that we currently have, that resolution we call, and that's that twelve percent one, it looks at, um, a two-year rotating five-year forecast line, so whatever the prior years. So basically, if we were looking at last year's prior year expenditures, this prior year, prior year expenditures, and we set forty-five for the cash reserve, twelve percent, then I would look at not just this fiscal year, but I would look two more years out to see if it doesn't hit that, and that's what would trigger me to tell you guys, two years prior to. As in, in the future? Yes. That, hey, in in three years, we're not going to be hitting that, so I'm making sure that you're aware of, if we don't change anything and it remains exactly the same, we'll be hitting that twelve percent three years downward.
This says current indoor subsequent fiscal year.
Yes, so we could do that.
As you're doing your five-year forecast projections, it's gonna, either gonna ping that or not for us. Or if any point during that current year, we happen to accumulate that cash balance, over or below, it's gonna be flagged. I I think the biggest benefit of this, from an overall fiscal management standpoint, though, is we are identifying what we think is fiscally responsible range of, to to maintain for the cash balance, I think that's why it has the word range, cause we understand that how, due to the fact that how we receive revenues and those types of things, there are fluctuations in that, so we're not just gonna pin it on, we should maintain a twenty-five percent, right? Cause there's there's fluctuation involved in it, but we're gonna identify a range in which, of what we think is fiscally responsible to maintain as a rainy day fund, um, to account for those fluctuations in revenue and expenditures. But as a policy, we shouldn't allow it to go above that without considering whether or not to take action. We certainly wouldn't, shouldn't let it fall below that fifteen percent without probably taking pretty immediate action.
If it's getting close to that, we'll probably go. I doubt what we need, needed to be told, though, right?
So we can, uh, some of your, we're gonna make some tweaks to this, so you're comfortable with?
I don't.
Okay. And if we can, I, you know, I would really like to bring this up for.
It could be the second reading next time, just like we do the others, and see if we're happy with that wording.
That works. Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, next item, create a work session, which will include but not li, not not be limited to discussion on the following items. Digital agendas, school resource officer, social emotional learning funds, I assume here, the quote-unquote divine money. Wraparound services, how some people know or associate that. A strategic plan update, potential new positions, and a spending plan. I assume, is this capital spending?
Yes, yes.
Capital appropriation needs.
Capital and basic positions as well.
Uh, I'd like to add on to this, we could, our budgeting process, annual budgeting process. Any other? I'm, I bet you would like to add to that work session. I I'm fully supportive of doing an early work session here, we'll have one new board member come on, and I think it it was really helpful for us when we had those those work sessions, so if we could get one early in the year and hit the ground running, I'd like to.
I will send out a Google poll.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we talking about, so my only issue here is just from a scheduling standpoint, are we talking about a four-hour session? Are we talking about?
A seven-hour session on Wednesday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will, I will probably go towards a Wednesday night to keep away from any activities that you possibly can. That seems to be the one night that.
Do the Google poll.
Yeah, that's what I said, I I will.
But for planning purposes, are we talking about a four hour?
Probably four hours, yeah.
You can always consider a weekend, too.
Can we ask them to start at seven instead of six? Is that possible?
It's our meeting, so we're not asking anybody to start at seven.
We'll meet you halfway.
I mean, would board members be open to doing a Saturday work session?
Depends on the Saturday.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm okay with it, for me, I.
Is that something for a put-off when it's all together? And so the, so the superintendent, when he's putting out the options here, have.
Because I'll be honest, I want those four in the room.
Okay, does that impact that?
Well, so, I mean, it's just one more, it's one more people to schedule on a Saturday that.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll put the poll up, if we'll.
I mean, I agree with Ryan, it might have to be a late night, then if we're gonna do it during the week, because. Three of us work in Columbus.
And you don't want it to start before six in the morning, or something?
At one. Yeah, I mean, I got no problem going late, but we just, we need to, we should vacate enough where we can accommodate people's work schedules. I'm all for it.
And I will keep, we can share information in regards to like the digital agendas, like Karen brought some things to the table today that she found out from, that we're using, so I can put that through you prior to the meeting, so you know what's, what our options are.
Okay, last piece that board members have in front of them, got passed out in hard copy. It's related to our speaker from public participation in terms of facility usage for youth activities, something I tried to work up for the board to consider, and it's not just sports teams. Um, I think this extends out to clubs and organizations who are in our community, who are made up of students of this district. Uh, you know, I think this should be a part of, frankly, I know several of us talked about a giving back agenda uh, in terms of the policies that we would implement to give back to the community to show support. And I think that providing a li, a little more access to these buildings for youth organizations and youth groups who are, who consist of students who are members of this district would would be a great way to do it. And I've, um, not just talked with Mr. Riddle on the sports side, uh, I've got some personal experience as well, but I've talked with many other youth coaches who have been frustrated by not being able to to utilize the facilities as much as what we've been able to hear from from coaches, youth coaches from other school districts about being able to have access. And so this would be, um, something that I would hope we would strongly consider. It accounts for access when school is in session, which is pretty much what we have now in terms of, you know, the way things work right now is when school's in session, are you, at least from the sports teams, I don't know about other clubs and organizations. But we do have access, it tends to be fairly limited when you distribute and you prioritize as it should be, high school and middle school teams, particularly when it comes to indoor sports in the winter. You know, there's only, there's only so much gym time available. So we have access, but it is fairly limited. One of the things that's really limited, though, is in our current policy, we do not allow these organizations and youth groups in this building when school is not in session, even if the building itself is actually open for public events. So, give you an easy example, youth sports were not allowed to have practices last Monday night, when the building was open to have a varsity basketball game and a middle school basketball game. So the facilities were open, but school was not in session, so under current practice. So the facilities were open, but school was not in session. So under current practice, youth teams were not allowed to come in and practice that night. That really, really limits your time to work with these young people. And, you know, I can speak from experience, we have a lot of humbling experience, at least when it comes to sports, winter sports in particular. For our kids going out and, and having a pretty rough time when we compete against other school districts in the state league. Um, because it's very apparent that they have a lot more ability to work with their kids on a, on a more regular basis than what we do.
So is the issue that, that we have the time and we're not allowing them to use it? Because I know, I have a daughter who cheers and they have a very hard time getting gym space. And many times they can't get it. Um, last week, for example, they're high school kids and they have a big thing at junior high. You know, they try to do the balconies and those are for youth wrestlers, not a school sport yet, but youth, so they eliminate those. So then they try the K-two cafeteria and the other night they had to do half their practice in the K-two cafeteria and half their practice in the K-two gym. Which doesn't help them because then they have no mats. So, I mean, our own, so is it, like, I'm confused, like, they're saying that we have all this gym time, but yet our high school kids can't get gym time. So.
Yep.
How's it, JV?
I, 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 I don't know. I, I, I can tell you that when, when you have varsity sports are a, a, asking for three hours and gym one each, that eliminates that gym.
Gotcha.
So when you go to four middle school teams, a freshman basketball team. Wrestling, cheerleading squad, um, there are certain play, there are certain things we can do, cheerleaders can do that a basketball team cannot do. Mats, I, I've asked the question, the age-old question about the mat for cheerleaders. They don't perform on them on Tuesday nights and Saturday nights. So I don't, I've been told we don't need them. They told I do need them.
They can't stunt without, they can't practice stunting without the mats.
Okay, I'm just telling you what I was told, uh, I'm just by the people who are paid to coach them. Um, that's, I mean, I. This is not a new problem.
Oh, no, it's not.
And, and for us to have the facilities that we do with four gyms when other schools don't have four gyms, um.
So, but we allow, when my kids were in grade K through five, K through six, actually, I think it is. They use the K-two gym for basketball, I think four nights a week, because each team.
We do know.
Four teams and they basically practice all night in a K-two gym. So what hours are there that we can open up that we're not? Is it mainly weekends? Is it, are we limited by our union? Are we limited by our union with, um, the janitor and having to pay for that?
Yes. Our policy states that they're best be accustomed in a facility when it's being utilized.
The policy does, but the.
Is that with their union contract?
Bargaining, bargaining contract, it's not. So that's what we'd be changing is the policy.
I thought the bargaining contract did. It does not.
Yeah. I, I, I'll have to re-read, but I do not believe it says that.
I thought that it did say that because.
But again, I, I know this is why I get paid a big bucks, but the two o'clock phone call in the morning because someone stuck a rug at the door, doesn't come to anybody but moi. So, uh, and I, and I realize everybody, I know everybody's going to check it today and we're, we're going to have everybody do this today. And again, this is a conversation I've had since two thousand one. That phone call comes with a duffey, to me. So it's not, it doesn't happen all the time. It might happen three weeks in a row. It's just, that's the reason those things are there for protection. That, that's not.
Let me tell you how this policy addresses that situation.
I see that.
So, you know, what this policy says is that youth sports teams can have access when school's not in session. If they have, they're working with a staff member or an approved coach who has building access. That they, that the reservation times are confirmed with whoever we're going to appoint here at the school to be the scheduling authority. And if they sign an agreement that says that they understand we'll buy-by whatever maintenance and building usage rules. That the school district wants to set for these organizations to have access when the building isn't, when the school isn't in session. And if you, if you abuse the privilege, then you can have your privileges revoked. It's as simple as that. I mean, if you don't take care of the building when you get the privilege, then you can have it revoked. But there's no reason why we're not going to provide, that we shouldn't provide access to the community, particularly students who attend this school district. Just because, just because school isn't in session.
No, I, I totally agree. And don't we, do we do key cards for coaches now instead of keys so we know who's been in and out versus years ago?
We're paid coaches.
We're paid coaches. But this policy is saying, not saying a paid coach.
No, this, uh, we wouldn't even go to that part. As much as I would advocate for that, that, you know, you want to go through an approval process and have access yourself. This policy even says you have to coordinate with an existing staff member or a paid coach to be able to gain access. So if you want to come in on a Saturday, I gotta go, the varsity basketball coach or someone else on the staff. You know, my reservation time has to be approved, but I gotta work with someone who has building access. So JV doesn't have to come in and let me in on Saturday.
So if somebody leaves the rug in the door by key card access, we should know who's in there. Maybe we didn't know that years ago, it was just a key, so you didn't know who was coming and going. But now with that key card, we do know. So that's a good thing. And I, I think the community should use our buildings. We say this is a community building and we should use it for that if we have the ability to do so. I do know the winter sports are tough, though. I know the varsity sports have extensive practices.
And I, I think part of this, Mrs. Psalm, is I think having a centralized, a more, a better organized scheduling process. Would also reveal a lot of opportunity that isn't taken advantage of right now. And I think, it seems like it's improved this year, at least from my perspective, but I think there, I think we're missing a lot of opportunities just by. I think having the, the scheduling, who's in charge of the scheduling and the reservations kind of all over the place. And so if we, you know, if one person's going to take ownership of athletic facilities, all athletic facilities within the district. And maintain that master schedule, I think you're going to pop up a lot of open opportunities that we haven't been taking advantage of.
I thought Cheryl did that. Doesn't Mrs. Pontius do that? Or is it more than one person doing it?
That's part of the problem. I think we're trying to maintain too much. I think the athletic department needs to have ownership of athletic facilities.
I will, I will kindly disagree because when, when he is scheduling athletics and she is scheduling outside facilities and outside organizations.
Band concerts, I'm sorry, I use the gym for band concerts, so I don't agree with that.
There, there's no reason they can't be coordinated.
But why should I have to go through athletics to schedule a concert? That's, that's not something.
Oh, I don't, I, you wouldn't.
But you're saying athletic facilities. We don't have an auditorium. We are, the band no longer fits on our stage. So we have our concerts in the, the gymnasium.
But your band's going to be a school sa, under this policy, your band is a school sanctioned activity.
Right.
You automatically have access before any outside group even can apply to, to reserve it.
That doesn't always work that way because it's, a lot of times it's first come, first served, who's ever reserved it. If it's reserved and I go to put in for it, I'm told, no.
Then a youth group's going to get bumped out of it for a school sanctioned activity.
That's not the way I was, I, I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
That's what this says, and if you could, please, I've, I've asked everybody else to keep public participation and public participation. That definitely applies to staff members as well.
I'm sorry.
I think it's important. I think it is, I, I think it's important. And I think that we've done a poor job of this. And I want to continue to push this issue. I've, I've just seen too many other examples of districts with less. And lower quality facilities make it work better than we have, that something's missing. And I, I think this, we have, you know, we have an obligation here to, to do something on this. Robin?
Can we ask Mr. Riddle to let us know what schools he has easier access to and can somebody reach out to those schools and find out what they're doing? To find out how they're scheduling better than what we are, or appear to be at least scheduling better than what we are?
Yeah.
I mean, it'll be interesting to see there, it's just to see what their opportunities are and why they have more than we do.
Like one, one problem, is that, is it okay to speak, uh, since the question was asked? So, um, one school that I've spoken to is Bloom Carroll. And, and they have, to my knowledge, I think they have four gyms, three to four. Uh, but from a participation standpoint, they have three to four times more teams at each level than we do. And they're practicing three to four times a week. Uh, part of that is if you take, for example, like the seventy-seven gym, uh, there could be two practices going on there once. Um, another example is, uh, weekends, and when school's not in session. I mean, especially when school's not in session, those are days that do sports, if the volunteers are, are, are able, that we should be able to take advantage of. Because everything should be open the entire day because school's not in session. Um, now as far as like me getting into, into a gym, and, and what I mean by that is, uh, a liberal union, my brother and, and his wife, uh, they live there. And they are volunteer coaches and they have key cards. So if it's a Sunday afternoon and they want to access the gym, they get into the school. Uh, whether or not it's two players, three players, one player, they're getting in. Um, and then another part of that is like the hosting, uh, you know, when you think of fundraising. Uh, this is my third year and I haven't hosted a single game until this year, uh, thanks to Coach Justice kind of working with us to get us to host the game. Those are ways to raise money for the youth, youth organizations. So, I, I mean, I think it can be done, it's just a matter of, like, branding, it's better organization.
I, I, I want to repeat, it's not organization, it's, it's policy that we're following. But if we want to change a policy, I'll be going to change the policy and follow that procedure then.
But just to clarify, um, according to the policy now, if it's a Monday and we don't have school. If I want to get in the gym, all I really need according to the policy is Coach Justice to let me in.
No, because I, I don't know if Mr. Justice is going to be there.
Well, he doesn't have to be there, right? He just needs, some of, uh, a, a, a non-volunteer coach needs to let whoever's in charge of the team access, right?
I don't think that's how the policy reads. I, I, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't, uh.
I thought that.
No, that's the proposed.
The proposed.
The proposed, okay, that would be the proposed, okay, okay, okay.
Not that current.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with the idea that, that we need to allow as much access as possible. I mean, the caveat is just finding out what's the best way to make that happen. That works best for everybody so we don't have people double scheduling or, you know, or any other, any issues with this. Definitely need to look into it. I mean, I like the look of this policy, and again, from the standpoint of who schedules it, if it's Mrs. Pontius, if it's somebody else. I, whatever, whatever makes the most sense. And I'm happy to listen in terms of, you know, as a board member to make a decision, help make a decision. I'm happy to listen to any and all suggestions. But, you know, I, I, to me, it, it comes back to whatever makes the most sense. And I, and I see the issue with, you know, maybe it shouldn't be a specific athletic person, because again, there are other things that use the gym. But whatever makes the most sense. If it's Mrs. Pontius still, if it's somebody else. But the main thing is, I'm perfectly good with the idea of allowing more access if there is the opportunity to have more access.
Any other discussion, question?
Just, I think if, um, Mrs. Psalm's going about, if we poll any other schools, I think we would have to include extracurricular beyond athletics. To make sure that if Bloom Carroll is allowing everybody, does that include the band? Or who else might need access?
The other thing to ask them too, probably a good point is their teams are fighting half court. So they're fitting two practices in at the same time.
Oh, we're, we're doing that.
So our varsity and red earth?
No, the biddy, we're talking about biddy, playing on, talking about youth sporting.
But our, okay, but our school sports, seven through twelve, don't do that?
No.
Okay, I, are you saying Bloom Carroll's do?
This is for their, more for their youth.
Just their youth, okay. I was like, wow, do they really do that? I was, I was shocked. I want to hear more about that. Okay. That makes more sense than, you're saying that biddy can do or.
Yeah, I mean, like the band and the varsity, those, those guys always take precedent.
Yeah.
Then we're kind of the fillers on the back end.
Gotcha. That makes more sense. I got it now.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine.
First board meeting, I'm a rookie.
Come more often, you won't be.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Seeing none, uh, let's move on to the next item then, which is, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, a motion to meet an executive session to discuss implementation of a public official employee.
And if we go to executive session.
See, I'll make the motion, you're second.
Executive.
Mr. Sharp, seconds, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
At eight forty-seven.
We are in executive session. There will be no other actions tonight.